Welcome to City of Harrison, City Council Meeting, September 5th, 2023. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Michael Futrell from Triumphant Baptist Church to lead us in prayer.
Will you bow with me? Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much for this day and thank you for this opportunity where we can gather together to talk about the business of our community. Father, we're so grateful for the leadership that you have provided to us through our councilmen, councilwomen. Mayor, I pray that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions on behalf of our community. I pray that they would make decisions that are for the betterment of our people and for the betterment of our community. And Father, thank you for giving us such a great place to live in, a great place to raise our families and grow together. Father, I just pray that you be amongst us tonight. In Jesus's name I ask this. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Grubbs.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Maynes.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Approve council meeting minutes, August 15th, 2023.
So moved.
Roll call.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah. Samuels.
Yeah.
The mayor's not here, so she's...
Yeah.
Aren't you taking over a little early here, Mr. Grubbs?
I am. I'm just figuring this seat out a little bit.
Yeah.
So we'll move into invited guests and visitors. And first, I'd like to invite up Matt Eisenbrough. He is our new Economic Development Director. He brings a lot of years and experience. I'll let him get into some of his backstory, but his first day was August 30th, and we'd like to welcome him.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and just introduce myself. I have been in economic development, depending on what you're counting, for 15, 16 years. Most recently, I was with the city of Moraine, just south of Dayton, and then before that, for about 10 years, I was with the city of Middletown. Previous to that, I was doing consulting work, helping small businesses, medium businesses grow through SBA program that I was the director for Butler County Small Business Development Center. So I've been working with businesses and then working with communities for a good portion of my life. I think some of the most rewarding time of my life. I really enjoy what I do. I am excited to be here. I'm excited that you have so many things going on. I was ecstatic walking around downtown, seeing all of the progress that has been done. I'm looking forward to the update, to the comprehensive plan that we're looking at doing next year, is my understanding. And I'm just excited to be here. It's been wonderful, a great experience. I started last week. On Wednesday, the 30th, was my first day. And again, I've just gone around meeting people. It's been a wonderful experience, and I'm really looking forward to what we're going to be doing here in the future. So, and I am aware that we need to get a building leased, a fairly good-sized one. That is on the agenda, so we'll do that.
And a steakhouse.
And a steakhouse.
Thank you.
Chick-fil-A. I can go down there. Yes, we're going to be working on those. So I appreciate it. Wonderful meeting you all, and it's been an exciting couple of days so far. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Welcome to this crazy team.
And we have one other speaker. I apologize, ma'am, if you'd like to come up to the podium, and please give us your name and...
Okay, it's Lady Hulman. I live at 10468 Deer Trail Drive, and I have since 1978 been around a while. And a lot of you probably know my husband. We wrote this book, Never Give Up, and he's been, he has had book signings at the library and the VFW and the American Legion and Barnes and Nobles and what's the one out at Rookwood? Anyway, so my concern, and if it's inappropriate for me to talk about this at this time, let me know. I'm concerned about the development in our area that Gradison has been presenting. And I had a few questions. One thing I wondered is, who is responsible for finding the developer who most appropriately fits what we want in Harrison? And I, yeah, I know I live at Land Hill, and I know we bought five and a half acres years and years ago, but we are losing the small-town feel. And I was a teacher for 30 years, and I was very upset to hear about the overcrowding of the schools. We were given a seven-year, whatever, that it would be not, we would not be crowded, and three years later, we're already crowded. I wrote a letter to all of the city council. I never got a response, but I'm not very good at the computer, so maybe you didn't even get it. But as a teacher, I taught split sessions, which basically, in my letter, I said, "You stopped the conversation too soon." Yes, we're going to have overcrowded schools, which we already have, but then the problems that come with that are to be solved by the administrators and the teachers. And they are very creative people, and I felt like in my district, it was the northwest district, that we were very creative. And I know you all have had the mobile units, you know, that's one solution. There's also the, just doing the split sessions, doing a four-day week and, well, there's a lot of ways that you can work around it, but none of it is good for the kids, none of it is good for the teachers. So I mean, we're going to have a problem if all of those houses come over by on Carolina Trace and also Edgewood. There's going to be a lot of traffic, and I'm hearing that there have been traffic studies. I'm sorry, I sit at Walking Burn in Carolina Trace, and I count cars in the morning during the day. It's great, but you get around the time that schools are letting out, and I sit there and I can count 32, 34 cars, and that's without those developments. So I was at church on Sunday, and a person said to me that they were told it's pretty much a done deal, that we're going with Gradison. And I thought, now wait a minute, because I was involved in the meetings, and all of a sudden, I thought, it's a done deal, and I'm thinking, that can't be. And this is, if this is inappropriate, I'm just telling you my thoughts. I feel like Gradison, first of all, came back two months earlier than they were supposed to. They were supposed to come back in six months. So they're two months earlier, right when people are finishing summer vacations, getting ready for school to start. So they're not going to get a lot of people there at the meetings, which I don't know what it's been like. The couple of weeks we were, Brad and I were out of town in Branson, Missouri for the Marine Corps reunion. So when I came back in, a friend at church and another friend in the neighborhood said, "This is what's been happening while you're gone." So I feel like it's kind of, I guess I might use a very nice word, but it was sneaky in my mind. They came back two months early. They did it at a time where they would not get a lot of resistance, so.
There's plenty of resistance.
I was going to say...
There's plenty of resistance.
Yeah, the room was full when they were here.
Well, we have, don't we have a public hearing coming up on this? Yeah, I was going to say, it isn't a done deal at this point. You know, they have come back, they followed proper procedure, according to our city attorney. They followed proper procedure, and they have resubmitted a new development plan.
I knew that. I had heard it wasn't...
You know, for the most part, in regards to actual development, you know, we strive, or hope to strive, to find builders and developers.
So you're actively working to find somebody who would be more likely to...
I cannot speak to what has happened in the past. I can speak to what I would prefer, and I think we would strive to find developers that build in a style that we would like. I think that has happened some in the past. I'm not going to speak for anyone else. But, you know, in this situation, it's the development that's in front of us. And it will go before Planning Commission, it will come back to city council, we'll address all our questions in, not only our questions, but the community's questions, and we'll make a decision at that point whether it continues to move forward.
As I know, from Lawrenceburg, Aurora today to here, I'm coming up Kilby, and there's this big sign that's from Jeff Ikorn, and it says land, and it's got a phone number, and I thought, I need to get that phone number and let Gradison know about it, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's 50 acres of commercial land that's over there, but, you know, I remember when Land Hill, I remember hearing stories about Land Hill South being my dad's racetrack for dirt bikes, so he wasn't happy about your development back then.
Yeah.
And I remember when most of Harrison was not here.
I know, me too.
It was a small town, and it's developed, continues to develop, but it is trying to do it in a responsible fashion.
That's it. I wanted to...
And that's what we all strive. We sit up here, and that's what we all strive to do, not only in regards to developments, but everything that takes place here.
Is it...
And I can assure you that we do hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, is it possible to, like, form an independent committee to search for realtors to develop?
Well, that's our...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So... Could you talk with your neighbor, Kip, and tell us about the Front Door project and what your folks are trying to do?
Yeah, in regards to the independence, you know, obviously, Kip's leading the Front Door group and everything. Now, around developers, as Matt had mentioned earlier, we do look to hopefully address some of, just the overall picture from our Building Development Department. I'm not going to promise a whole new zone change or anything.
Right.
But we would like to address some concerns if we have the ability to. You know, it is keeping an open mind going forward, that we can't meet everybody's needs.
No, of course not.
But we want to try to listen and let you all know that you are heard.
And it's not that we don't want development, it's just we want the development that will not change Harrison.
It's nice, ma'am, it's nice that you came in on that, but we're going to have a public hearing on that, and we're not really in a position, every council meeting, to have individuals come up about the same thing. No. That's the reason we have a public hearing, so we can hear them all at one time. What I would, what I'd recommend is watch for the Planning Commission meeting, and then the next council meeting where it's coming back to city council, and then be present for those.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Give him, give him your phone number. We'll put you on his list. You're fine.
I am on the list. I get emails.
What's going on tomorrow is up over to... Thank you very much. I'm listening for an agreement.
Perfect.
So I've got my contact.
Well, you're good. You're good. Okay.
Thanks.
We'll move, move on to the business section. Vote on a resolution to award a contract for the Campbell Road and Industrial Drive improvements.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Was any of the contract discussed in utility or in streets?
It was not tonight, no.
Does anybody have any information on this contract?
Okay, so this is for the intersection of Campbell Road and industrial with the turn lane. Most of the funding is being provided...
Oh, no, no.
We're getting a grant, I think, from the state of Ohio, and then I know JTM is providing some money. And then we have a small portion that the city is going to front, but this is for the expansion and a light to improve that intersection, create a more safe environment.
Okay.
Roll call. Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Councilman Samuels, please.
Maynes.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yay.
Ms. Dole.
Yay.
That is Resolution 10.
What was the number?
10.
Okay, vote on ordinance amending the amounts appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison. Wilson, JW moves to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick, these were discussed in Finance Committee. The appropriations in this ordinance are two items. We have $136,000. That was for the Park Avenue project. There was an overage on the project that related to increased costs. Apparently, Mr. Leslie, Utilities Director, was notified that there would be an overage at the time. We didn't know the exact dollar amount, but it came in at $136,000. The other piece of this is $450,000 for the Campbell Road project, of which the majority of this will be reimbursed through an agreement with JTM and through various grants, so the minimal impact, it's minimal impact to the city.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Are there any other items? We'll move into reports. I'll go ahead and start this. The mayor, obviously, is not present this evening. We have a delegation from Meckasheim, Germany, in town this whole entire week, and there have been event, there are, and there have been events planned the entire week for this group. Actually, most of council was present this evening for a grill-out, and then there are plans each evening this week. And then there is the Sister City Signing, the United States version of the Sister City Signing, that will take place during our Fall Food Truck Rally this Saturday. It starts at 6:00 PM. There is a whole list of events. There's a car show and the food truck rally, but the entire delegation will be present for that signing, so I encourage everybody to stop out, introduce yourselves, because they are an absolutely fabulous group of individuals that serve in different capacities, as well as some of their family members. So while the mayor is doing this, I get to fill his seat this evening, but I do, I encourage each of you to take time to introduce yourself and be cordial. That's all I have. Law Director is not present this evening. Mr. Wilson. Yes, if you, like you said, you've got the group from Meckheim, Germany here, if you hear a lot of German around town, we're not being invaded. They are some great people, and I want to thank the Wolfert family for hosting the grill-out this evening out at New Haven Road. That's all good.
I, too, was at the Wolferts today. I want to thank them. The mayor and I actually were, were teaching a couple of the delegates how to play cornhole tonight, so that was a good night. Of course I won. The mayor lost.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Not going to make the point, but...
Saturday is a food truck rally, and this is, if you text FOODTRUCK2023 to 78015, you'll get any updates that the fire chief puts out, and it could be anything from weather-related to if there was any potential emergencies. So that's FOODTRUCK2023 to 78015. Did that cover it, chief? Thanks.
I do encourage everybody to sign up for the alerts. It's really nice when, when the city has any event that really takes place. They'll send out traffic alerts, accidents, just, just about any type of alert that needs to go out to anybody, there will, it will come across, and it's real nice. It's on your phone, you just read through it real quick. That way, you know to stay away from it. But that's through the Alert Hamilton County, is it the 411? Not 411, Smart 911. You could call 411 for information, but that's not going to help you. But I do encourage you to take the time to sign up for those alerts. Councilman Samuels.
Yes. So Finance Committee, after taking a break off in the month of July, we did meet in late August. Always as a topic of discussion, we did review the revenues, expenses year-to-date. Revenues seem to be consistent with budget. We're seeing an increase, a little bit of an increase on the income tax side. We're definitely seeing an increase on the interest from our investment side, but, you know, we are seeing a decrease on the fees from permits issued through the zoning department. So it's kind of washing out, so we're pretty comfortable where we, where we're at with the revenue side. The expense side, you know, we are, you know, throughout the year, we've gone through and approved these amendments, but we, you know, are approving these amendments, knowing that we are in a positive situation, that we can manage these expenses. The only item of concern that we're keeping an eye on is just in the Water Operating Fund. We're just keeping an eye on that. It looks like they're right on the edge of, you know, of the expenses exceeding the revenue, so we're just keeping an eye on that and watching it through the rest of the year. The 2022 audit status, that has been complete with no management letter, so there were no miscellaneous items identified in the management letter, and that is actually only the second time in the last 15 years that this happened, so I'm sure Kim is very happy about that. And we're in a, in much better position now than we were a couple of years ago, so we're very happy about that. With the completion of the audit, we're moving forward with the setting up of the 2024 operating budget, so we did have a slight discussion on that, and really, it was more around scheduling and getting meetings set up, so we're going to start our directors' meetings sometime in the September timeframe. I think there was one invite that had gone out for the middle of September, but I will announce those at our next meeting once we have those set up. Some of the miscellaneous items we talked about, we talked about the budget amendments that we voted on tonight. The time and labor management system is up and running. There's just ongoing training, just to make sure all the departments are up and running and doing what they're supposed to do. We did take a look at the, and this is a pretty hot topic with a lot of the residents, but we did look at the tentative market value for 2023, where Harrison is seeing about an average of 28% increase between the residential, agricultural, commercial, and industrial properties. You know, there was, at this point, there's no impact to us, it was just a notification on what the property values are. We also reviewed the Rita Monthly Distribution Report, just identifying what the payments are on a monthly basis, and really, what we use that information for is just looking at trends, and when we're developing the upcoming budget, we can kind of see where we're trending and help come to a pretty comfortable revenue level. The downtown speaker upgrade is complete, and I mention that because we did use the ARPA funds for that, and also Kim and Karen. I have started working on with the various departments to get the fixed asset inventory updated and get those items properly tagged, so they've been visiting various departments. That's pretty much it. One thing I do want to note is that we have been talking about the fire levy, discussion of discussing the replacement of the fire levy and options around that. I am going to ask that we set a public hearing at the next council meeting to discuss that. I was going to ask that we do it tonight, but I felt with Cook out, I wasn't sure how many people were going to be here and not be here, so I didn't want to set that without everybody's input. So Reese, I'll ask you to add that to the agenda. I'll send you an email on that for the next meeting. The next Finance Committee will be September 26 at 4:30. Next Police Committee will be Tuesday, September 19th at 6:00 PM, and that is all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. I would like to just chime in. I know Councilman Samuels and Councilwoman Wilson have all said this, and multiple people have made comments, but Ms. Kim Downey has done an excellent job with the Finance Department in, in the reporting and making sure that we have the information that we need to really be effective in our roles. And obviously, this audit and the recognition she's receiving for her hard work is, is well-deserved, and I do want to say congratulations to her and her entire department, because it does, it makes our job so much easier to make good, well-informed decisions from the financial aspect, so. Councilwoman Dole.
Yep, I have a quick report. So our last tree board meeting was on August 22nd. The majority of the meeting was a discussion with Mark Gradison. He actually came to the tree board meeting to discuss the landscape parts of his current plan. So most of it was about the trees and shrubs that are in the common areas, as well as any kind of a berm to block the view of the back of the houses. Gail Chuck is the head of the Tree Board Committee, so she was able to kind of put in Land Hill's input as well into that. Nothing was approved, nothing was a done deal. It was just a conversation to improve his current plan that he does have, just to kind of get feedback and revise it. Let's see, this fall, we are also going to plant nine ginkgo trees in the downtown area along Harrison Avenue for IT. There was no IT meeting tonight due to the dinner with the German visitors, but there was also no meaningful updates with IT, so that's that for that month. And then the, as far as the district goes, the Fall Food Truck Rally is going to be this Saturday. It's from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM downtown in the district, and at 6:00 PM is going to be the German signing of their, of the sistership document. So, yep, that is like the highlight of that, and come on down to the shops and see the restaurants, and then the next district meeting will be September 14th at 7:00 PM, and that's going to be via Zoom. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Maynes.
I have a report. Trying to get some information here real quick, that, just trying to get the fellow's name, and I'm not going to be able to pull it up. We had, we did not have an Economic Development Committee meeting this evening, but I do have a report from Gordon Wong, and I'll read that here in a minute. We did have some folks come in that live on Jefferson Avenue between Park and Harrison Avenue with some sewer, sanitary and storm sewer issues. We listened to what's going on there, and we're, have open lines of communication, work diligently to try to resolve the issues that we have there with the sewer system in that area of downtown. Some of that I was just aware of for the first time this evening, so we're in the process of reacting to that. We had some folks invited to come to the meeting, Chad and Monica, and I can't remember their last names. Monica was with me, Link Solar, and she gave us a proposal for installing some solar panels on the landfill, the old landfill behind the wastewater treatment plant, and using the power from that, the solar panels to power at least part of the needs for the wastewater treatment plant.
Were they not present?
What's that?
Did they, were, were they not present for the meeting? Did they come?
They did come, yes, they did come. That's why we held the meeting this evening. We had had this scheduled for, Jim and I had had them scheduled to come in and visit for a couple of months now, so they did come tonight, and they gave us a presentation on that, and just looking at a couple of different, you know, no out-of-pocket cost option, obviously, we don't save as much money if we were to do that versus, you know, fronting the cost for the solar panels up front, but, you know, there's a bigger savings to be had there. But, you know, just the initial discussions of what that would be, you know, one of the big questions that we had was, can we even put solar panels on our landfill? Apparently, you can do that now. They have precedent where they're doing that in other, Columbus, and I believe a city in the Cleveland area has been able to put solar panels on their landfill, which right now, all we can do is, our understanding is, we can just mow the grass. So it was a kind of a good, we didn't get to spend as much time with them as, as we would like because of the other issue, but it was a good initial conversation, and I look forward to continuing that discussion. You know, we're looking at, I think, utility bills over a 30-year period run us about $15 million, and maybe saving us half as that, half that, you know, if we want to make the couple-million-dollar investment up front, so.
Is that all?
That's all, yeah. So we're talking, you know, 15 million total, so, and, and saving perhaps 7 million.
Our numbers aren't that good.
What's that?
Our numbers aren't that good.
Yeah, I know, I know. And we explained that to them. So Gordon put together this staff report, let me read through it fairly quickly. Some folks have been asking about the Hearth Brewery in the old Berwickel site. That plan is continuing to move forward. People saw a for sale sign, either a new one, or maybe the old one hasn't been taken down, but there's no plans other than to continue moving forward with a goal of having some temporary occupancy of the facility in spring of 2024 to start, you know, brewing the products that they eventually want to sell. Corona Kia is in the design stage at six maintenance bays to the north end of their building. The work is expected to start as soon as possible. building, the work is expected to start as soon as possible, and they're also looking at an expansion of their Fleet Service Building, so Cronenkeia is continuing to grow, their business is good. Papa John's is looking to return back to Harrison, they would like to move into 606 Ring Road, which is a space vacated by Make Me a Pizza, so they're in the permit process for that. Permits have been issued for Jersey Mike's, people, if you're watching social media, the dumpster's out behind, and people are watching that on a daily basis, Jersey Mike's is moving into the old Velvet Smoke building, which is adjacent to the BP Station on New Haven Road, that's 10-515 New Haven Road. There's been a permit issued for the vacancy at 10548 Harrison Square Shopping Center, this is adjacent to Red Squirrel, and these folks would like to put in a pastry dessert shop, just what I need for my blood sugar. Everybody else is a pastry dessert shop.
Wow.
Yeah, so. Kroger's is obviously in the process of store renovations, most of the work is being done at night, they've already moved Starbucks kiosks, as far as I'm aware, moving the floral area, deli alterations, expansion of the pharmacy, and other aisle alterations, I know I can't find anything there anymore, takes me a couple hours to get in and out of that now.
Calls quite the uproar.
What's that?
That has caused quite the uproar.
Yes, yeah, you can go to Rumkey, they're easy to get in and out of, and I've done that as well. CTS expansion, their, their building expansion shell is up, and enclosure of the building is expected to be completed this month, all work is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year, so we're excited that CTS is continuing to grow and expand. My wife and I walked by the JTM Phase 4 expansion over the weekend, and that building is up, groundwork is being completed, the building, building is being fitted out over the next few months, and they're expected to have completion by the end of the year. And the comments here are, you know, if you have questions, contact Gordon Wong, but now we're going to contact our new Economic Development Director, Matt Eisen Braun, and we welcome you and look forward to working with you and having our next Economic Development meeting, the first Tuesday in October, with Matt, so welcome aboard, and that's all I have. Mr. Councilman, I wanted to say Mr. Mayor, but not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
He's the mayor tonight.
Mayor in training, he's the vice mayor.
Vice mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Wilson.
I just have a short report there, sir. Just want to remind everyone, before the food truck rally on Saturday, the big Harrison yard sale will be on Saturday. Now, don't come down here and expect a spot, because all spots are sold, but if you're looking for a great deal, I'm sure we'll have plenty of them on Saturday for you, and St. John's School is going to be selling refreshments, and we're going to have music, and it'll be a great time, and I think the weather's supposed to cooperate with us, so we're looking forward to that, and plus our food truck rally, and also, hopefully, that you'll come down Saturday to the food truck rally and meet our visitors, they're all super, super nice, they're thrilled to be here, and it's been a real joy being around them all day today, so we're looking forward to the rest of the week with them. That's all I have, sir.
I have one other thing I forgot, we're going to be the, Lexi and I and the other five precinct chairman for the Republican Party will be interviewing this on the 18th for the, to fill a vacant spot that will become available in January. We're hoping to talk someone out of getting married so that we don't have to fill two spots. Right now, we're not very successful on it, but we're still working.
Not going to work. That's not going to work.
Okay. Are there any other items? I'll entertain a motion or adjourn.
I shall move.
I'll second. Take your mic first. Sufiism.
It's overwhelming. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah.
Egner.
Yeah.
Samuels.
Yeah.
Dole.
Yay.
Mains.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Stand adjourned.